Okay. Six o'clock. Welcome to the September 2nd meeting of the governing body. Call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilman Duncan, who will provide the invocation for this evening, rise as you are able and then remain standing for the pleasure of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. The individual I had come in this evening had a family emergency this morning, and so they weren't able to be here. So I'm going to keep this short and simple. I guess I'm going to keep it in that lane of family. I think a lot of people know, some don't. My family is going through something right now with my mother. So I'm just going to ask everyone this evening to just take a moment of silence for anyone in their family who's in need or struggling, and just take a moment to think about and send good thoughts their way. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Banks.
Here.
Kell.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hopper.
Here.
We have, I'm sorry, we have nine present.
Move on to appointments. Madam Clerk.
A is an advisory council reappointment of Monique Pope to the City of Topeka Americans with Disabilities Act 88 Advisory Council for a term ending July 11, 2027.
We've heard the appointment as read. Is there a motion? My screen isn't working, so if I can get a motion from the body.
Motion in a second.
You would do. Okay. Motion from Councilman Duncan, second by Councilman Dobler. Yeah, it's not.
Okay.
Uh-oh, something isn't right, is what it says.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we have a motion in a second, Brenda.
Okay, yes, we do.
To approve.
My second, okay, let's try that. Now is that working?
There are a lot of them.
Okay, we need to take a short break.
I think on appointments, do it by voice vote?
Yeah, that's fine.
So all those?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. And Ms. Vopat isn't here with us this evening. She'd planned to be, but I'd like to acknowledge her willingness to serve on the city with the Topeka Americans with Disabilities. So if we could just give her a quick applause, I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to presentations. Madam Clerk.
The first presentation, we have the 2025 National Night Out Update.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the governing body. Bianca Burnett, Community Programs Administrator, will lead us through this item.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Governing body. So I'll be presenting this evening on behalf of Director Glaude, who is out of the office today. Tonight, I'll be sharing a brief overview of this year's National Night Out, highlighting the impact it has had across neighborhoods and the strong community participation, and a look ahead at what's planned for the future.
I think events such as National Night Out, allowing the community to come together, it's not only important, it's essential for the fabric of our community. Being able to allow people to come together and not have the concerns about titles, social and economic status, where you live, just being able to come together as one, to enjoy themselves and to have a good time. The countless smiles, seeing people dialogue about different things, seeing people playing together who otherwise possibly couldn't, just because maybe they didn't have the opportunity to come and be in each other's presence, was just an amazing opportunity and experience.
It's called National Night Out for a reason, so this takes place throughout the country. And again, it's a day of celebration, a day of collaboration, and a day, quite frankly, that is needed, and this is the way that a city should put on an event.
It's relaxing. I mean, we get to meet, we get to talk to people, we get to laugh with people. We spend our whole day laughing, you know, and in police work, some days you don't laugh at all. And so when you have a whole day where that's the focus, is just talking to people in a way that people get to leave with smiles, what it's all about.
All the guys can't wait each year to come out here and see the kids.
I think aspects of community is always something that I want to support and something that I think is just great for Topeka. People finding out about what other people are doing, what they have available, and it's opportunity. You guys had so many things going on, the talent show and face painting, and just a safe place for our children to come out and be. It was a very well-done event where there was something at least for everyone, at least one thing.
One of the things that I thought went really well, and you know, we weren't even aware that they were going to do that, was that the East Topeka Senior Center brought several busloads of seniors to the event to be able to participate, and that was awesome. That was amazing to have them come out and be able to interact. This event and any events that we do in the community wouldn't be possible if we didn't have volunteers and if we didn't have the dedicated team that we have.
This event, we had significantly less time than we would have any other event to plan. We only had 90 days to plan this huge event. So it's definitely some scrambling here and there, but I mean, we're a great team, we have awesome minds, and we all work together really well. We can get things done, so pretty seamless, I would say, at that.
It's an opportunity for anyone of any age to come out, to feel welcomed, to feel seen, to be able to fill their spirit and soul with not only food, but with entertainment. So what a phenomenal opportunity for someone to take, just to feel a part of the entire fabric of Topeka. I would tell everyone if they have the time next year, to take just a few months to come and help us with the experience.
It was a powerful display of unity, trust-building, and public safety awareness across our city. We saw neighbors, families, and city departments come together with one shared goal: to strengthen community connections. We're proud to share that nine neighborhoods independently organized and hosted their own National Night Out gatherings. These were truly resident-led efforts with support from Office of Inclusive Communities, showcasing local pride and initiative. Events included block parties, youth-focused activities, and safety awareness with law enforcement. Each neighborhood brought its own flavor, but all shared a spirit of unity and collaboration. In addition to the neighborhood events, Office of Inclusive Communities facilitated a large citywide event which welcomed over 1,500 attendees. This event provided a space for families to gather, enjoy entertainment, and engage directly with city departments, public safety agencies, local vendors, and community organizations. Some of our biggest highlights from the day were the talent show, the touch-a-truck, the car show, various youth activities, food vendors, and a community resource fair. We measure success not just in numbers, but in the relationships built and the trust Over nine, or I'm sorry, nine neighborhoods hosted localized events, over 2,200 residents engaged across the city. Countless connections were made between neighbors, city departments, and public safety personnel. These moments help ensure residents feel heard, valued, and included in their communities. As we look ahead to National Night Out 2026, we're already working on improvements to enhance impact and access: sponsorship outreach to offset cost, better signage and wayfinding, transportation options for seniors, neighborhood planning meetings in advance, talent show trials for local youth and families, and food truck area upgrades. We're proud to report that the total cost for National Night Out 2025 was $12,950.73, which was well under the $15,000 that we had budgeted. This demonstrates our commitment to delivering high-quality experiences efficiently and responsibly. We are actively seeking community sponsors to further offset future expenses. Looking ahead, we are committed to supporting more neighborhood-led gatherings, deepening cross-department partnerships, and ensuring every resident feels a sense of belonging. National Night Out reinforces the public safety and community well-being, go hand-in-hand with trust and visibility. We want to extend heartfelt appreciation to the many partners who made this possible, as well as to our neighborhood leaders and local volunteers. And at this time, I would like to ask that if our volunteers or partners that are here this evening, if you would please stand up, I would like to personally thank you. Without these volunteers and many others, we would not have been able to make this event the success that it was. In closing, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and members of the governing body, for your continued support and trust in the Office of Inclusive Communities. Events like this are a direct reflection of our shared commitment to strengthening neighborhoods, building trust, and celebrating community. We are proud to lead this work, and we look forward to growing it in 2026 and beyond. Thank you again for the opportunity to present, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Certainly, I'd like to compliment you, Bianca and Monique as well, and any of our outside partners beyond the city employee volunteers who joined on this, because this was a switch from what we have done in the past years, and you did a great job of adapting, and I heard nothing but good compliments, especially about the resources that were available there at the Egg Hall. You had a whole lineup of different contacts that a lot of people were, for the first time, seen in one place. It was kind of convenient that it was inside, so some of the people who might have been put off by the hot weather or something, although it was good weather that day, they really enjoyed that, having them all in that one place like that. So my compliments to you, staff, and to the city volunteers, and those who do not work for the city, who partnered with us for that event. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other comments? There are questions? Thank you, Bianca.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we'll move to the consent agenda. If you will read, please.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting the Celtic Fox an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at Sea concerning noise prohibitions. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as the 2025 Tap That Brew Festival. C is approval of a joint memorandum of agreement between concerning group health care cost-sharing with the labor unions for 2026 to 2028. D is approval of a professional engineering contract amendment between the City of Topeka and professional engineering consultants, PA, for the engineering and design services associated with the boiler system upgrades at the North Topeka wastewater treatment plant. E is approval of a professional engineering contract amendment between the City of Topeka and Bartlett West Incorporated for the engineering and design services associated with the Southwest 21st Street Water Main Replacement Project numbers 2812-25 Phase 12 and 2812-93 Phase 3. F, our minutes of the special meeting of August 26, 2025, and the final applications.
We've heard the consent agenda as read. Is there a motion to entertain to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan and the second by Councilman Dobler. And we think we can use the machines now to vote.
Yes, sir. You can vote.
Yes?
Yes. I was just going to ask. Okay, Councilmember Miller is yes, and Councilmember, okay, and Councilmember Kell?
Yes.
Okay. And then Councilmember Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Okay. So we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Move to Agenda Item 5A. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, before the city clerk reads the action items, I wanted to ask to move Item 5D to the September 16 Council Agenda.
You've heard to September when?
September 16, sir.
Okay. I don't have any issue with that at all.
Okay.
We can just go ahead and defer that one for this evening. So, for the record.
Okay. So we'll move Item 5D to September 16. If there's no objection from the council, then we'll move forward.
Any objection from the council? Seeing none, okay.
Okay.
We'll proceed.
All right.
Action Item 5A.
All right. A is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project numbers 2812-93 Phase 3 for water line improvements on 21st Street from Buchanan to Washburn, as further described in Exhibit A.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, Sylvia Davis, our Director of Utilities, will lead us through this item.
Director.
Good evening. Tonight, we come before you requesting approval for a project that exceeds $250,000 and is ready for construction as the description read. This is continuation of our 21st Street transmission line. We are asking to replace 1,200 linear feet of 24-inch line from Buchanan to Washburn, and then we also have some additional 4- and 6-inch distribution piping and some service lines and fire hydrants. This project was presented to the Public Infrastructure Committee and is budgeted for $2.2 million. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions? Comments from the committee? Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Councilman Banks, second by Councilman Dobler. We are ready to vote.
Okay. Councilmember Kell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Dobler, is that working? There we go. And Councilmember Valdivia, is that still on?
I'm double-tapping, and it's still, yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Action Item 5B. Madam Clerk.
B is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project numbers 2812-50 Phase 1, 281300 Phase 9, and 501106 Phase 11 for water line improvements on Stony Brook Drive as further described in Exhibit A.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, Sylvia Davis, our Director of Utilities, will lead us through this item.
Director.
All right. Again, we come before you seeking approval of approximately 6,700 linear feet of 8-inch PVC water line along Stony Brook Drive. This project was again presented to the Public Infrastructure Committee and is budgeted for just over $2.1 million. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Any questions? Any comments from the committee? Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Banks. Ready to vote.
Councilmember Kell?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Gotcha. All right. We have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Action Item 5B. Madam Clerk.
B is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project numbers 2812-50 Phase 1, 281300 Phase 9, and 501106 Phase 11 for water line improvements on Stony Brook Drive as further described in Exhibit A.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, Sylvia Davis, our Director of Utilities, will lead us through this item.
Director.
All right. Again, we come before you seeking approval of approximately 6,700 linear feet of 8-inch PVC water line along Stony Brook Drive. This project was again presented to the Public Infrastructure Committee and is budgeted for just over $2.1 million. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Any questions? A motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Banks. Ready to vote.
Councilmember Kell?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Gotcha. All right. We have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. I ask the clerk, do we still have someone signed up for comments on 5D, but we've deferred that to?
Correct. Yeah, the item's been deferred to September 16. So we can go ahead and carry that name over until September 16, center up for that agenda if you'd like.
Okay. Can we take that public comment now, or do we want to defer?
That's up to you, Mayor.
Yeah, they signed up, they probably have a message they want to send, so.
Okay.
We have one person signed up. Danielle Twimbro.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I did want to take the opportunity to, no fault of Marni Properties or anything with those property owners, because they are just trying to utilize a system and a precedent that has already been set before them to get the same benefits. But I do want to make sure that we're always saying out loud the running total cost, that this previous deal with Klosman is costing our city. So as these new deals potentially come up and more forgiveness is given because the precedent was set so high, I want to make sure that we're continuing to keep that running tally, that running total. So with the $47,775.01 that is proposed if these penalties are forgiven, with combined $3.22 million in lost value and future value on the previous developments for Klosman's deal, along with the $7.95 million that he currently still owes, roughly, you know, given, takes some change there, we're looking at $11,217,775 that this deal is going to cost us with likely more people coming forward. So I just want to make sure that we're always keeping out loud what this is costing us in terms of having to continue to give that same, that same treatment. Which does really bring me back to something that we, you know, I brought up before as well, that we don't have anything set out on our city website or anywhere about how do more people set up meetings in order to ask for forgiveness, because I see, which I'm signed up for too, to speak about liens on people's homes for minuscule amounts of dollars compared to these specials and taxes, which, you know, makes their lives way more difficult to manage when you have a lien on your house. So I'm not seeing anything about how people can set up any meetings, about how we're forgiving property tax, or, you know, previous things that are owed to the city so that other people, regular people, who are just trying to make ends meet, can get the same kind of benefits, because it's beginning to feel very one-sided when we have, you know, the next ordinance that's coming up in the non-action items, which I'll finish talking about during that time. So thanks, I just want to make sure that we keep that running total out in the open.
Thank you. Move on to Action Item E. Madam Clerk.
Is approval of the allocation of the 2026 Social Services Grant Recommendations in the amount of $491,904.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, Carrie Higgins, our Housing Services Division Director, will lead us through this item.
Thank you. Move on to Action Item E. Madam Clerk.
Is approval of the allocation of the 2026 Social Services Grant Recommendations in the amount of $491,904.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, Carrie Higgins, our Housing Services Division Director, will lead us through this item.
Thank you. Move on to Action Item E. Madam Clerk.
Is approval of the allocation of the 2026 Social Services Grant Recommendations in the amount of $491,904.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, Carrie Higgins, our Housing Services Division Director, will lead us through this item.
Thank you. Good evening, City Manager, Mr. Mayor, governing body. We are here again tonight with the 2026 Social Service Grants. I believe that we have answered any questions that, that there might be about the eligibility process and ensuring that there's no duplication with this grant process and other grants that agencies might be receiving. So we are seeking approval this evening, but happy to also answer any questions beforehand.
Thank you. Hi, Jessica.
Good evening.
Any questions? On the recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler and a second by Councilman Dobler. We are ready to vote.
Thank you. Jessica. Good evening.
Any questions? On the recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler and a second by Councilman Banks. We are ready to vote.
Thank you. Jessica. Good evening.
Any questions? On the recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler and a second by Councilman Banks. We are ready to vote.
Thank you. Jessica. Good evening.
Any questions? On the recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler and a second by Councilman Banks. We are ready to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Action Item E. Madam Clerk.
Is approval of the allocation of the 2026 Social Services Grant Recommendations in the amount of $491,904.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, Carrie Higgins, our Housing Services Division Director, will lead us through this item.
Thank you. Good evening, City Manager, Mr. Mayor, governing body. We are here again tonight with the 2026 Social Service Grants. I believe that we have answered any questions that, that there might be about the eligibility process and ensuring that there's no duplication with this grant process and other grants that agencies might be receiving. So we are seeking approval this evening, but happy to also answer any questions beforehand.
Thank you. Hi, Jessica.
Good evening.
Any questions? On the recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler and a second by Councilman Banks. We are ready to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Action Item E. Madam Clerk.
Is approval of the allocation of the 2026 Social Services Grant Recommendations in the amount of $491,904.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, Carrie Higgins, our Housing Services Division Director, will lead us through this item.
Thank you. Move on to Action Item E. Madam Clerk.
Is approval of the allocation of the 2026 Social Services Grant Recommendations in the amount of $491,904.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, Carrie Higgins, our Housing Services Division Director, will lead us through this item.
Thank you. Move on to Action Item E. Madam Clerk.
Is approval of the allocation of the 2026 Social Services Grant Recommendations in the amount of $491,904.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, Steve Groh, our Director of Public Works, will lead us through this item.
Director.
Good evening, governing body. This project also went before the Public Infrastructure Committee last month for approval. It's a reconstruction of Southwest Martin Drive between 41st and 42nd Streets. It's a segment of concrete pavement in an industrial area on the south side of the town that's completely shot. This project will be just under $560,000. There's a small portion of stormwater funding to replace a stormwater inlet. Looking for your permission to proceed with this project for construction yet in 2025.
Okay. Any questions for the Director? Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Banks. Ready to vote.
Councilmember Kell?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Dobler, is that working? There we go. And Councilmember Valdivia, is that still on?
I'm double-tapping, and it's still, yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Action Item 5B. Madam Clerk.
B is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project numbers 2812-50 Phase 1, 281300 Phase 9, and 501106 Phase 11 for water line improvements on Stony Brook Drive as further described in Exhibit A.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you.
makes their lives way more difficult to manage when you have a lien on your house. So I'm not seeing anything about how people can set up any meetings, about how we're forgiving property tax or, you know, previous things that are owed to the city so that other people, regular people who are just trying to make ends meet, can get the same kind of benefits? Because it's beginning to feel very one-sided when we have, you know, the next ordinance that's coming up in the non-action items, which I'll finish talking about during that time. So thanks. I just want to make sure that we keep that running total out in the open.
Good job.
Thank you. We'll move on to action item E. Madam Clerk.
E is approval of the allocation of the 2026 Social Services Grant Recommendations in the amount of $491,904.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor members of the governing body, Carrie Higgins, our Housing Services Division Director, will lead us through this item.
Thank you. Good evening, City Manager, Mr. Mayor, governing body. We are here again tonight with the 2026 Social Service Grants. I believe that we have answered any questions that there might be about the eligibility process and ensuring that there's no duplication with this grant process and other grants that agencies might be receiving. So we are seeking approval this evening, but happy to also answer any questions beforehand.
Thank you. Hi, Jessica.
Good evening.
Any questions on the recommendation? Okay, seen and motion to approve by Councilman Dobler and a second by Councilman Miller. Ready to vote.
Councilmember Kell?
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, we'll move on to non-action items. C, Madam Clerk, and we have one person signed up to speak on that item.
Yes, correct. A is a discussion related to the imposition of real estate liens on properties that have received utility services but have failed to pay for such services.
Okay. We will proceed, and then Ms. Twemlow, you'll have the opportunity to speak.
All right, ready for me then. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The City of Topeka provides water, wastewater, stormwater, and fire line services to a variety of customers located both inside and outside the city limits. When customer utility bills become delinquent, our normal delinquency controls are to turn off the customer's water service until the customer makes full payment on the delinquent amounts. However, that's not always possible. This evening, I'm going to take just a few minutes to discuss our utility lien ordinance process and this year's numbers. This is our annual process, and it only involves active accounts. Some customers receive wastewater service or stormwater service from the city, but no water service. This greatly reduces our ability to induce payments from customers with delinquent amounts since we cannot shut off their water service. Most of these customers are customers of the rural water districts, and the rural water district cannot shut off water for failure to pay a city Topeka bill. This year, the Utilities Department sent letters to 146 property owners regarding delinquent utility accounts at the end of July. The total balance for those 146 accounts was just under $112,000. Eighty-nine of those customers, or 61%, have previously been included on a similar lien ordinance, and staff has attempted to make personal contact with the other 57 customers who are receiving this notice for the first time. As a comparison, last year, we sent out 175 letters with an outstanding balance of approximately $130,000. By October of 2024, there were 116 accounts remaining with a balance just over $102,000 sent to the county for that utility lien assessment. Of the 146 letters sent this year, 96 of those accounts remain unpaid as of noon today with a balance just over $87,000. We will update these numbers again next week when this is in front of you for action. If you are actually able to see all the dots on that first map, you would see that of the 146 letters mailed, 94 are outside of the city limits, all of which are wastewater customers. 52 are inside the city limits, 44 of those being stormwater and eight being fire line Utilities have a couple different collection methods available to us, but the lien assessment is by far the most effective. However, a lien can only be used when the utility account holder is also the property owner of record with the county. The customers identified in this ordinance are delinquent in their payment for services provided by the city by at least 90 days and in many cases, 365 days. State law permits the city to institute a lien on the property of these customers in order to recover payment for services rendered. This ordinance is passed every September so that we can provide the final list to the county by their deadline of October 1st so that they have sufficient time to add the delinquent amounts to the tax statements that are mailed in November. Even though we will be asking you to pass this ordinance next week, we'll still take into account all payments made up until noon on Tuesday, September 30th, before we send that final list to the county. And that's what I have. I'll stand for any questions.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. How many of those bills get paid when people pay their taxes?
Based on the numbers we see, we collect 98%. So I would say just about everybody. On a very rare occasion, something might go to a tax sale, but most of these are paid in full on an annual basis.
I guess it's kind of like running a tab or something. We had somebody who had code complaints once who said, "Oh yeah, the police and the code people just put it on my bill." I don't want to advertise that.
We have certainly heard that before. A few years ago, we started implementing late payment fees on these accounts, which didn't exist before. So at least they're not running that tab for free anymore. They are paying delinquent fees just like everybody else within the city.
But you said 98% are getting paid. Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Where? See somebody? Is there... Okay, Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to make sure I understand this correctly, so we're looking at at least originally 146 accounts. Of those, 94 are wastewater outside the city, so...
Correct.
The bulk of these are outside the city limits.
Correct.
Inside the city, we had some stormwater and fire line. So there's no residential water customers per se...
That is correct.
...in this batch. Thank you very much.
Further questions for Nicole? Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Twemlow?
Thank you. Thank you for giving me time today. What I want to talk about with this is thank you for clarifying that there's no residential water on the current ones that are owed after payment. But what I do find really concerning is it sounds like that there are other things that we could be doing to solve this problem besides such an extreme reaction as putting a lien on someone's house. So we have a barrier that we can't shut off water because these are in rural places. Have we looked at ways that we can be able to do that? Do we need to get with the county about or pass an ordinance where we have the ability to do that instead of these really drastic measures? Because what I don't see us doing is spending this much time on figuring out how to collect payment from someone who owes, you know, $8 million to our city. I don't see us spending time on creating ordinances to fill that gap of our budget, which would take out half of our deficit. I've gone to every single budget meeting. Every one of them sat there, listened, read through it, did the math. Nowhere, and went through the 300 and some odd pages, nowhere do I see where we are doing any plans to collect the debts that are owed to us except for nickel and diming people who have now had a 65% increase in their water utility rate since 2017. It went up 9% again this year, so add that on. We all know that the living wage hasn't changed for payment. So we're nickel and diming people to keep making ends meet by continuing to spend time on ordinances and all these extraneous measures for a total of now 80, what, $87,000? And continue to not put work in on how we're going to collect the millions of dollars owed to our city by someone who blatantly goes into the front page of the paper and says, "I'm going to come back and do it again," and I bet they're going to do it. And then we just keep having people come up and expect the same treatment, but not the people who can't afford to make ends meet. So I think we're spending a lot of time on the wrong things, and we should be looking at solutions and be looking at ways we can collect our debt better. Thank you.
Thank you. Non-action item 6B. Madam Clerk.
B is discussion on the City of Topeka budget.
Okay. Again, we have City Manager. Go ahead and acknowledge.
Thank you. Mayor members of the governing body, Josh McInerney, Division Director of Budget and Finance, will lead us through this item.
Good evening, governing body. So tonight is just an open discussion night and feedback session on the overall budget. Just one item I want to make note of is next week is our actual budget public hearing, which is kind of similar to the R and R because it's all kind of tied together. But I just wanted to throw that out there, that hearing process, there will be another hearing next week where we can get feedback from the citizens on the overall budget. So just thought I'd throw that out there. And then we're looking at a tentative vote on the following council meeting, which is September 16th.
Okay.
Oh, and then also, if there's any amendments that, like we brought forward, we'd like those probably preferably earlier rather than later, just so we can vet them and talk about them in an open session, but that's kind of all that we've had. So we'd like to hear feedback on those two if possible.
Okay. So 16th is when we'll eat again. Okay. Any questions for Josh about our time schedule? Any questions for this evening? Councilman Duncan?
So if we have some amendments, you guys would probably like those in the next day or two so you can get a heads up on what we might be thinking and offer us either an alternative or a suggestion.
Yeah, preferably earlier rather than later, but luckily we got two weeks, so we got some time. So I don't want to think that we need it in the 24 hours, but so end of the week would be preferable.
Okay.
Okay. Dr. Peters?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to get the juices flowing, if you will, one of the items that I will probably bring forward for council's consideration as an amendment, we have an enhancement in the proposed budget for e-ticket citations, about $500,000, 130 of that coming from the general fund. We've had some new information that it may not be the 500K. And so what I would bring to council for consideration is an amendment to take the 130,000 and restore the two co-compliance officers that were, I guess, identified for reduction in the proposed budget. Speaking with staff, understand that there's a priority to work on our coordinated code inspections with Topeka Fire Department. And so I just want to make sure that the team has the resources to do that proactively. So that'll be one of the things that you'll see in the coming weeks that I'll be asking for council's consideration.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Councilwoman Hiller?
Just overall, a question for City Manager, really. To me, with the deficit that you all have acknowledged and disclosed, to me, it's just really not responsible for us to vote on the budget as proposed without a clear understanding and as much consensus as we could have on what the heck we're going to do about it the following year. Otherwise, it's really just kicking the can, one could argue. So could you speak about what you have in mind for us to resolve if we did something close to this budget? What's the plan for 2027?
So, Councilwoman, there's a combination of things, right? Number one, I mean, we have some pretty conservative revenue estimates. We don't know what's going to happen with our revenues. They could come in higher, they could come in lower, but I think Josh and the team have done a good job as far as conservatively estimating our revenue projections. So given that, and then also to the positions that we have slated for reduction and/or freeze, I mean, we'll carry those to 2026. And again, I think we've identified those as part of our potential savings for 2027, assuming that we continue those. Now, just as a reminder to the governing body, I mean, some of those freezes include 10 police officer positions, seven firefighter positions, and a battalion chief. And so again, we'd have to consider those types of reductions and/or cost-saving measures. I think there's still, I think we've shared with the governing body, some of the dollars that are in some of our other funds that we could potentially tap, there's opportunities for, and again, these are one-time, these are probably going to be one-time considerations. If we look at some of our balances in some of our internal service funds, some of our, whether it be our retirement funds or our health funds, things like that, we'd have to balance those as well. I think I've shared with the governing body that $15 million deficit in '27, I mean, those are going to be some big things that we're going to have to consider. We talked earlier this year about potentially eliminating a fire company, and that gives us $1.4 million. But again, just for, I mean, just for consideration, those are going to be some of the big things that we're going to have to consider moving forward because we can come up with $50,000 here, $100,000 there, $200,000, but I mean, to make up $15 million, you're looking at some real reductions. And again, I don't, kind of as we've been talking last year, I mean, this year, we projected 17 million and 21 million, as we were looking at it last summer. Again, we've balanced the budget with the proposed budget that's before the governing body, and moving forward, we just have to look at all the different opportunities and again, have to make those decisions in order to make up $15 million in the future.
Thank you. Because of course, as we know, those one-time transfers from funds, that money won't be there for a one-time transfer again. So no suggestions then? It's just open-ended and no revenue?
Well, and what I would hope is that the governing body would consider we were in the same position last summer. Again, we made some reductions, we made some revenue adjustments, and again, we closed the gap, the 17 million, projected $17 million gap for 2026. And again, the $21 million was projected for 2027. We're now estimating a 15. So again, there's going to have to be some tough choices that we're going to have to make. But again, as far as having a proposed budget for 2026, which we're required to do, the team and I have developed that and put it forth for the governing body's consideration.
I knew that. Thank you. I guess I'm still, just so people know, I do the best that I can. I'm happy to take other people's ideas too and try and make a list, but to me, we shouldn't go in with, we should try and cover at least half of that budget deficit now so that it's not carrying, so that our employees know what jobs are going to be here and which ones aren't, what programs are going to be here and which ones aren't. We talked about programs back a year ago in our discussions, and then we've still been just looking at dollars and cents here and there. I think we, I don't know, I don't like continuing to kick it off if, just push it down if there's not really a solution in mind. I think it's more responsible for us to try and grab it now. So same thing with the CIP. I don't want to take things out, but if we can keep that to 15 years so it's not layering up. We had a good suggestion last week from Councilman Dobler about looking at fire stations being part of the countywide sales tax next time instead of being big hits in the CIP, you know, looking at the Polquency Number 2. You know, to me, that's an interstate highway. It's troubled me tremendously that we're paying more than $20 million, a share of fixing an interstate that we didn't design, we didn't ask for, and we're having to do all the stuff on the ground. I think if we start now, for instance, saying we don't want to have to pay for Polquency Number 2 on the east side and Polquency over at Gage and Fairlon, and work with our, get a commitment from our staff, some of these solutions that we can look at don't have to be just moving money from one fund to another, but making a commitment that we're going to get some big things funded some other ways. That could include making some decisions and clarifying our commitments on what our role will be in some of these things that we've also been talking about, like homeless roles or affordable housing roles. Are we, those are emerging somewhat in terms of saying the nonprofit sector is leading that and we're supporting, we're not the leads. Good, but clarifying that so we know that even things that people are asking for that aren't here, that we've addressed that and made a solution so that we can work clearly going forward with this community and fly instead of just wonder when the next argument about it's going to... We had a good suggestion last week from Councilman Dobler about looking at fire stations being part of the countywide sales tax next time, instead of being big hits in the CIP, you know, looking at the Polquency Number Two. You know, to me, that's an interstate highway. It's troubled me tremendously that we're paying more than 20 million dollars a share of fixing an interstate that we didn't design, we didn't ask for, and we're having to do all the stuff on the ground. I think if we start now, for instance, saying, "We don't want to have to pay for Polquency Number Two on the east side and Polquency over at Gage and Fairlon," and work with our, get a commitment from our staff, some of these solutions that we can look at don't have to be just moving money from one fund to another, but making a commitment that we're going to get some big things funded some other ways. That could include making some decisions and clarifying our commitments on what our role will be in some of these things that we've also been talking about, like homeless roles or affordable housing roles. Are we, those are emerging somewhat in terms of saying, "The nonprofit sector is leading that, and we're supporting, we're not the leads." Good, but clarifying that, so we know that even things that people are asking for that aren't here, that we've addressed that and made a solution, so that we can work clearly going forward with this community and fly, instead of just wonder when the next argument about it's going to happen. I think we can do it. So, I just encourage everybody to think in that way, see if we can't get this puppy a little more under control. Thank you.
Further comments? Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
On this item, I have Ms. Sandra Lassiter signed up for comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to address the council on this evening about an incident that we had concerning our City Manager. And that is that when he came to the city, we greeted him with pleasantries and niceties, but however, in a recent meeting with the manager, he concluded it by dismissing us, being dismissive of us. So, in that meeting, he mentioned that there are some persons who have been in his ear, so to speak, that who are in opposition of who we are. And I just wanted to stand tonight and tell you that we in Topeka, Kansas, are boots on the ground. When he stated it, it concerned me, because I thought, "I don't believe that this person has the audacity to make that comment to some of us," and I didn't know if it was because of prejudice or discrimination, which it really couldn't be, because I know he has melanin in his skin as well as we do. And the persons at the meeting-
Madam, if I can interrupt-
You certainly can.
Your comments were on, supposed to be on the budget.
It is that. I'm going to the fact that this manager-
Please, ma'am, don't identify anyone in particular.
Okay.
The issue is what you want to speak to.
All right, not a problem. But someone is making $256,000 as a leader in this city, with a $700 addendum. We have approximately 10 attorneys. Five of them are making over $1,000. Our concern is that we have some persons who are coming up and weeping, like those senior citizens did the other week, that are elderly and unable to pay their property tax. My suggestion is that we could possibly have a hiring freeze, a hiring freeze on some persons at the top, who are making, as they say, buku money, a hiring freeze on those positions, a hiring freeze on salaries, or persons that would be committed. Matter of fact, we have one candidate running for a position here, I understand, in November, that said he would take no salary, that maybe we would have the heart and conviction to maybe sacrifice for some of our citizens in Topeka, seeing as how we only have approximately 125,000 population and no growth. The other part of that is the email that I received from this individual stated that he would not suggest that the city approve any claims. His team would no longer accept meetings from us. We are boots on the ground. The committee that met were pastors, were legislators, were educators, were financial advisors, were counselors, and also persons who are invested in this community for over 50 years. My concern with this is that we cannot afford to continue with a budget 2026, with persons at the top continuing to receive the kinds of monies they're receiving now. Also, instead of possibly the interim city attorney, who has now replaced our exiting city attorney, who was making $167,000, possibly the interim attorney, who is making approximately $130,000 as an attorney, could possibly remain with that salary. And maybe that $167 could go toward some of our seniors that are struggling with paying their property tax. I believe that if we go forward, and we're looking forward, that some of the meetings with City Council members, which I'd like to request at some point, who are the bosses of that individual? It was stated to us that those persons that who are in opposition to us are persons on-
How much time would you like, ma'am?
One minute.
Any objection? Okay.
Are persons who are in the City Council, they are the bosses. They're the persons who's been speaking in their ears. My concern with this City Council is that you're here for the benefit of every individual in this city. I'm not complaining too much about property tax. Mine's been raised maybe two times, but some of these older senior citizens are three times, and they can hardly, well, they are not paying their rent, they're trying to hold on to a house, medical bills, insurance bills, all kind of strategic things happening in their lives, and we have the audacity to increase a salary by 3%, put it on hold, and let's stop and back up, and let's look at, what are we really doing to the city of Topeka? Thank you very much for your time. I have a article here that is the email that I received from this individual refusing to have a meeting with solid veterans and people that are Bible-believing, believing God's going to bring us through this. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Steve Schifflbahn, and I'm from Mother Teresa of Calcutta Catholic Church, and I'm representing Topeka JUMP, the Justice, Unity, and Ministry Project. Since this is the last currently scheduled time for this Governing Body to discuss the 2026 city budget amongst yourselves, we wanted to come and urge you to support dedicated funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. As we've stated before, some may say that the trust fund should be funded by donations from private individuals, and some trust funds do have some private dollars that help support the cause. However, these private dollars can't sustain trust funds on their own. Private dollars do not come without a consistent investment of annual public funds. We will continue to discuss and advocate for that foundation of public funding during next week's public hearing on the budget. We are very glad that the Review Committee for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has begun meeting this summer and is scheduled to start discussing requests for proposals during their meeting tomorrow. We believe that using the money that is currently available is a key step in addressing our community's continuing housing crisis. However, we also know that the initial $1 million will only go so far without having ongoing public funding to support it. We are grateful that we received commitments at our NEOMIA Action Assembly at Washman University in April to support a public funding proposal for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund from the City Manager and City Councilmen Marcus Miller and Spencer Duncan. We also received that commitment, again, for a $2 million annual funding proposal from Councilman Duncan at our mayoral candidate forum earlier this summer, as well as through email communications with our housing team. We are here to support our, we are here to state our support of Councilman Duncan's discussion in any amendments to get that $2 million funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund added to the city budget for 2026. We encourage the rest of the council to demonstrate to your voting constituents that you are serious about addressing this ongoing community problem by also supporting $2 million of public funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, public comment, I believe, is next. Okay. We have two individuals signed for public comment.
So, thank you. I am bringing concerns before the Governing Body after several confusing and disappointing meetings that I have been a part of, along with other community leaders and organizations with the City Manager and others. While I can only speak for myself, I do know through conversations with others in attendance that we are left unsure, and in my case, pretty outraged, with what steps that constituents need to take to be able to come to the table with the solutions that have been gathered and be able to be taken seriously. So, time and again, when community members raise concerns, the response is always, "What is the community doing to address this?" And the truth is, we're doing a lot more than what the city is at this point, with very little of support. Volunteers, nonprofits, and grassroots leaders are carrying burdens that the government is meant to help shoulder. Meanwhile, in other cities, even here in Kansas, governments are investing in upstream, evidence-based approaches that save lives and save money. At regional learning sessions, Topeka was met with a lot of disbelief, even laughter, with questions like, "Are you guys stuck in the 50s? Are you, like, is Topeka rural Kansas?" And even here recently, at a local conference, learning of the many other cities across Kansas who are investing in lots of upstream approaches in very unique ways. So, that's how we are seen beyond these walls, because we're not keeping pace with proven solutions. And yet, people keep showing up. We bring forward strategies that are working across the country, only to be blocked. In a recent meeting with those community leaders, and as mentioned before, two Kansas State representatives, the City Manager told us, "It seemed like we would always be angry unless we got our way." While he mentioned not being able to make decisions because of the Governing Body, he also mentioned, as pointed out, that he pointed to an unnamed opposition that he needed to take into account their thoughts as well. So, tonight, I'm asking directly, who is the opposition? Is it you, the Governing Body? Is it an unseen influencers outside of this chamber? Because if the conversations aren't happening in here, then the community deserves to know who is holding the city back. So, let me be clear, this isn't about getting our way. This is about whether Topeka chooses to invest in solutions. This is about whether we stay stuck in old patterns, and whether we're finally ready to move forward with people-centered approaches that save both lives and taxpayer dollars. So, here's my call to action. The community has done our part. We step up, we show up, we keep pushing even when we're shut out. The time has come for the Governing Body to decide. Will you stand with us, or are you going to stand in the way? So, I urge you to take that into consideration.
Mr. Henry McPhee?
Good evening, Your Honor. There couldn't be a perfect segue to what I wanted to talk about, about you guys standing in the way. Let's have a public forum, an open meeting, about Lawrence Bay. Why don't we let the public, let's let the public decide who gets that deal? See, in the real world, this is not the real world. The real world is out there, this is not the real world. When a guy doesn't pay, he doesn't get to do things anymore with an entity in business. In business, if you don't pay your way, the other guy stops doing business. The anomaly here is, a guy hadn't paid all his specials, but he's still in possession of the property. Wow, he's got the best of both worlds. But now, we got Chuck Doltmeyer. Chuck Doltmeyer has been in the wings wanting to do a deal. He said he's been talking to you guys, but you guys don't listen to Chuck Doltmeyer? He just doesn't have enough juice. But I think the people would get behind Chuck Doltmeyer and let the other guy go. But you can't do business with that guy anymore. And I'll say his name, Jim Klosman. You can't do business with Jim. He's got to pay current. That's the way you do it in the real world. Hey, you want to do more business with us? Pay current. I'll tell you one thing that will not fly, is closing down a fire department. That will not fly. Like, oh, you know, the hotel was enough to really make it blatant, bad decisions are being made here, but Lawrence Bay's gone on a decade. You guys have let this go, you've had JeddO meetings for a decade, every quarter, you're sitting with the county. You know, I found out who really runs this when I called my county commissioner a long time ago, I'll send you guys the email, or I've sent it around, and I've started talking about Lawrence Bay. And this is, Lawrence Bay is actually what motivated me to want to get in and try to change things, because why does one guy get to sit up here? He runs you guys. Jim owns this city. He does. He owns this city, he owns you guys. You guys, you've got a whole different set of rules for him. And what's even crazier about this whole thing? I've made open records requests to the county, to the city. Whose job is it to collect it? Somebody's not doing their job. I mean, you're the head of economic development, really, that's what the mayor does, you lead the charge or the director, but the buck has to stop somewhere, but it doesn't. I can't even get a record, a cora request answered. Nobody will take responsibility. Well, Recheckert says the city can collect on those specials. What if some guy, and I'm not encouraging the public just to stop paying their library assessment, but what if everybody said, "You know something? That library's got too much." What's the difference in a citizen just not paying the library portion of their taxes, and Jim in Lawrence Bay deciding, "Well, you know, I'm not going to pay the special portion." And he said, "Go talk to Kurt Kuta." Here's the thing about it, he says, "I never intended on paying it," which makes it even worse. But look, man, the chickens are coming home to roost. You know, they say, all those guys that say, "You know, I'm moving out of the country, phone bill gets elected," I'm sticking around to watch what happens here. But maybe there's just a higher authority. I couldn't get Kobach to really look at these taxes, but there's somebody up there that will look for this.
Okay. No one else has signed up? We'll move on to announcements. Madam Clerk?
Okay, for the September 9th Governing Body meeting, we will have one appointment to the Civil Service Commission. We will have one professional services contract on the consent agenda. For action items, we have an ordinance for the Monroe School Overlay District text amendment. We have an ordinance for the Monroe School Overlay District rezoning. We have an ordinance on the Ardent Real Estate zoning that's located on the southeast intersection of Southwest 29th Street and Armstrong Drive. We have an ordinance from Colpi Investments LLC for property located at 625 Southwest Pulp for rezoning. We will have a public hearing on the 2026 operating budget, and then we will have three resolutions authorizing the disposal of real property. The first location is 204 Southwest Fifth Street, second location is 400 Southeast Eighth Avenue, and the third location is 225 Northwest Curtis Street. And then, we will have the ordinance on the utility bill, real estate means.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Duncan?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Hofer?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hager?
Thank you. I am going, I have added to my announcements tonight to be part of the public record, so media can look it up, to whoever can look it up, a series of emails from Chuck Doltmeyer, and I got Chuck's permission today. I did talk with him, and I'm planning on meeting with him next week. And so, I'm going to be going over real quick these emails, and folks can, you know, have access to it. Also, the article that was in the Capital Journal that talks about Klosman being told to start out slow and then come with the big punch with all the rest of the properties that he wants to work out a deal on. On August 14th, there were two emails that were received by Chuck Doltmeyer, who is a developer here in town. He sent it to the entire City Council. I believe, as a local developer, the city is creating- the city is creating an environment of unfair practice to the developers in Topeka. The city has already made exceptions in favor of Klosman. Resolutions have been and continue to be waived in favor of this developer. The city resolutions have been adopted to protect the city. They also created a fair environment for all developers, only if city enforces the same rules for all. We own over 400 lots in the Topeka community. We have always believed taxes should be paid to develop, and we are current on all our lots. Developers will not be able to compete fairly on the decision city council is proposing. Klosman is responsible for $9 to $11 million for the lots he owns in Lawrence Bay. The issue of Klosman was allowed, for the first time, to waive back taxes. It was said here, this was the first time that it happened. It's not true. He was delinquent on taxes when he developed Wheatfield Village. City council allowed Klosman to escape the resolution and fund the project with city sales tax over the next 20 years. The city is biased in their decisions. The city needs to operate for the successful outcome and abide by resolutions and fair practice for all developments." Moving over to the second email. When he was told by a councilperson, why didn't you speak up before about this? He said, I did speak up in January of 2024. My offer was not accepted. I guaranteed the city absolutely no loss on infrastructure. The city took a million-dollar loss in the fall of 2023. I offered to have homes in the spring. Evergy had my plan and was going to deliver the area necessary power for development. The problem is, city council obviously was not informed of my plan. The only negotiations was between the city and Mr. Klosman. The city can negotiate with an advantage of the lots. We'll take $80,000 to replace. Why are Klosman's demands even considered? The land bank is a perfect answer to the local builders to step up and build. The method of fair development by the city rules and subdivision regulations has not been a consideration. City waived multiple resolutions. Delinquent taxes create the issue of no city services. Lot mowing was waived. Wheatfield Village was developed. I was aware of the Wheatfield development and considered the development was a plus. The recent issues are absolutely not acceptable for the development of new homes in Topeka. This project has hurt the expansion of Topeka. I also requested to develop 14 lots with the same parameters as Klosman. I was denied the opportunity to develop. I expect your direction of fairness to your constituents should be challenged. I hope there would be a discussion by city council on this matter." So after this, I want to understand for sure, because our outgoing city attorney, I think I recall, I'll have to look up the email, said that we could not sue him. I want to know for sure, by whoever is acting as a city attorney, whether Klosman can be sued or not. Also, there is an ordinance where if back taxes are not paid, services can be shut off. Klosman owns a number of entities across Topeka, some, you know, where older folks live, buildings on Kansas Avenue, et cetera, et cetera. Is there any possibility where services could be cut off unless he paid his property taxes? I want those answers specifically, please, from the lawyer, whoever is acting as a city attorney. Because if we can sue him, we should be suing him. With the cases that we are in, with what we have seen, the poorest of the poor, or the fixed income of the fixed income people coming up here and bearing their hearts and saying how they struggle, and yet, we sit here and let this guy, who is the mover and shaker, do whatever he wants. And it is true. Read that article. He's cocky as hell. Then, the other thing I want to go to is, I understand how there would be a need by a city manager not to want to meet about certain things, not being able to legally to meet about certain things. Get it? That is absolutely appropriate. In these meetings that are being talked about, where there were two state representatives, my husband, John Alcalo, being one of them, there were multiple issues of policing being talked about. I talked to four different people and was told that our city manager acted in a rude, condescending manner. Our chief was not ready with information. This is not acceptable, to deny meeting with the public that is actively trying to help better Topeka. We say all the time, why don't they get involved? Why don't they get involved? And then, when they get involved and you get upset with having to meet with them too much, you shut them down. That is not what a city manager is hired for. That is not what should be going over to the assistant city manager, because you don't want to deal. And I don't recognize who our city manager is right now. And I'm extraordinarily disappointed, because we are at a pivotal time when we can be changing things, and we're not. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz is not here. Councilman Banks?
You're welcome at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Keller is still online? Oh, I see. Excuse me.
Nothing, sir.
Before, okay, thank you. I see Councilwoman Ortiz has lit up, so. Councilwoman Ortiz?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And Councilman Keller, did you say you had nothing?
Yes, sir. Nothing.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give some respect to a friend of mine back in 2002, when I graduated high school and went to Washburn to play football for Craig Sherrig. One of the other people that did that with me was Grant Gould. He was all-state, all-world, really, linebacker at Highland Park. And just two nights ago, his mother and father were driving on US 24 and K-237 highways, and somebody didn't stop. You know, when those highways are coming together and people aren't paying attention to signs, when they're intersecting and they don't stop at those signs, they're going full speed at people who are creeping at 5, 10 miles per hour. And his mother, Connie J. Gould, lost her life, 66, at Topeka. I'm sure a lot of people who are hearing this right now know who she is. And I wanted to make sure that I give respect to her and that family in this time of grieving. You know, sometimes, you can do everything you can, and then you lose your life as to no fault to yours. There are times when you set in motion a number of things that may ultimately be your demise. And nobody wants those things to happen, but sometimes they do. But in moments like this, when a good person's life is lost, I wanted to make sure that we give respect, because I immediately called my mother, because I'm the same age as her son, and told her I love her. And I advise you to give somebody that you know a call, just because, just let them know you love them while you're still able to. Thank you.
Councilman Dobber?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a long list of comments tonight. Now, I really don't. Nothing.
Thank you. There's no further business coming before this body, but I'd like to at least have an opportunity to say that increasingly, you can agree or disagree with me, it seems like people want to attack this body for whatever reason they have, valid or invalid. This body tries to do its job under sometimes very difficult circumstances. To diminish their dedication and desire to make this city better is not fair. And so I want to ask the public, think about what we're trying to do as a community, not what you are trying to do on your own or with some partners, but as a community, how do we represent ourselves? People talk about they're laughing at us. How many people do you think are watching this council meeting tonight and seeing us on display? So I encourage you to keep your desires and wishes to make this city better in the way you think best. Keep them alive, but present them in a way that we can hear them and talk about them. I've heard tonight that we've talked to you, we've talked to you. There are selective conversations going on on this side of the dais just as well. There are people in the community who will not come to my office and talk. So there is a responsibility for that to be a two-way communication and not just a communication of negativity. We don't get anywhere with that. So I applaud you for being committed to your effort, but I ask you to do it in a way that we actually see some success and some community effort, not just a divided conversation when we turn around and walk away with nothing resolved. So those are my comments for the night. Not as detailed and lengthy, but I hope that you'll take them into some consideration. If there's no further business coming before this body, the meeting is adjourned.